To call the meeting to our August 25th of the Wheat Ridge City Council, please stand as we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes of August 11th?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of August 11, 2014.
Just a minute, there is a change that I would like to tell the city clerk.
I'm aware that Ms. Councilmember Davis was not here and she's listed as present and absent, and we'll change that.
If there's no further changes, then the minutes are declared as we've received them.
Okay.
Let's move on to proclamations and ceremonies.
Madam Mayor, we have a motion, we need a second.
Actually, we don't have to move to approve the minutes, just as we don't have to move to approve the agenda, and I've declared the minutes are approved, so we really don't have to do that.
You're declaring my motion invalid?
I declare your motion, I guess you would call it invalid, actually, we don't need it.
It's not like to have for the record that we voted.
We can have for the record that we voted, and our continuing operation can be that we don't have to do it in the future, but so that we do not have to declare the first motion invalid, may I have a second and then we'll vote?
So.
A second has been declared, please vote.
What are you voting on?
We're voting on the minutes, approval of the minutes.
Okay, okay. Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
I meant to abstain, please, sorry.
Because you weren't here. All right, proclamations and ceremonies, do we have any tonight? I don't believe we do. No, nothing. Okay, we can move on to citizens' right to speak, and this is citizens' wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, for max, and I guess we're going to get that list here. There he comes, the race is on. The clerk has asked if I could please ask for, I did.
I'm going to introduce.
Councilmember Wooden would like to introduce one of our public speakers tonight.
We have a new education committee in Wheat Ridge, it's called the Wheat Ridge Committee for Education Excellence, and as part of what we're doing in our committee, we have some guest speakers during public comment at city council meetings. And tonight, I'd like to introduce two of our guests, Jill Felman from the Jeffco School Board, and Warren Blair from Wheat Ridge 58, and they're each going to give you a little update on the school at Wheat Ridge 58 and the school board.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak about Jeffco Schools. I plan on being here every month to speak to you, give you an update, just a couple of things about what's going on. So I've got two tonight, want to let you know that summer construction has been happening, we had over 185, well, right around 185 projects this summer going on. All of the projects that were scheduled to be finished before school were indeed finished before school, the remaining will be done after hours or on weekends, so there won't be a disruption to instruction, and I think that's really exciting. The second really piece of really good news is Jeffco was just awarded, two schools were awarded the National PTA Schools of Excellence. One of those schools is right here in Wheat Ridge, Pennington Elementary. And what they said is, "A school of excellence certification both recognizes and celebrates the partnership among parents, PTAs, and schools. The school of excellence program supports new ways to engage families and school decision-making, such as improvements to programs, practices, and policies related to education, health, safety, and the arts." And I think that's really an exciting thing, because that supports the idea that, we all know that when you have parents involved in their kids' schools, you're going to see better achievement for kids. And so, I want to introduce one of my favorite colleagues, Warren Blair, and he'll tell you a bit about what's happening at Wheat Ridge 58. Thank you, Jill.
I think I can make this go up higher. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about Wheat Ridge 58. We've done some really significant changes, we've made some real significant changes over the last three years. First off, and I'm just going to hit a couple highlights, enrollment has increased from 325 students to 550 students. We are full, we are using every single classroom, we actually have a waitlist for choice enrollment students, so we have more students that want to come to our school than ever before. I called about five or six families, and I had two families cry when they found out they were going to come into Wheat Ridge 58, they were so excited. We do support the Jeffco curriculum, so our standard curriculum is the Jeffco standard curriculum. However, we also want to make sure that academic excellence and academic achievement is at the forefront of what we're doing, so we offer honors classes for any student that can demonstrate the ability and the willingness to try harder level courses, they're open to all of those students. We also have a gifted and talented track, it's also, that's for identified gifted and talented students through the district, and that's an assessment process that students have to be assessed and then placed into our program. We also offer a very robust electives program, choir, art, band, orchestra, computers, and a new program this year called Web, which is where everybody belongs, it's a research-based program that our eighth graders help mentor our new seventh graders, and that's been really interesting to watch. Our band orchestra participated in Elitch's last year and took home two gold medals, so they're doing really well. We offer ESL support for our English language learner students, and they continue to excel on the access testing, the state testing for our ELLs. We offer additional tutoring before school, after school, and at lunch for students who may need additional support, that's always open. We have a 21st Century Grant that allows for after-school programs, before-school programs, middle school sports, clubs, and activities, so we have our students that are very engaged. But this last year, we had, we implemented a one-to-one iPad program, each of our students is given an iPad, and our teachers are now using instruction through the iPad, they're able to access schooling 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they can do their homework, turn their homework in, they can also access their teachers at any time, and so they can research at home, so it really does extend that school day, and our students have really responded well to that. If you've ever heard of flipped classrooms, we're doing some of those things in some of our classes. That's Khan Academy, and some of our teachers are flipped classrooms. We have really high student engagement, I invited Genevieve Wooden out last year to come and take a look at our school and see what was there, and also, our increased parent involvement with our Parent Action Committee, we have about 20 people in Parent Action Committee. So, I know that's my time, but thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Very informative, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have two other speakers, Fran Langdon and Kelly Brooks, Fran, are you available?
Not that tall. Fran Langdon, 3570 Miller Street, and I came here tonight for two purposes, the first one was to thank council for your rapid action last week in passing a moratorium for no new marijuana businesses in the city, at least until we can study it. The second reason I came is to ask you to please use that time wisely, this is our chance, I think, to study the impact that this industry is having on our city. It's kind of interesting to see how quickly we've kind of latched on to this, and maybe it doesn't seem like it's quickly to you until it starts coming up in your own neighborhood. I'm learning more and more as we start getting more and more involved in this. I think now is the time that you guys can step back, put together some numbers, how much money are we generating, how much are we giving up? A little nervous about the fact that we kind of are catering maybe to the guys in the big three-piece suits that look kind of official, you start wondering, is this going to be another Black Hawk? When people voted in gambling, it was kind of with the mom-and-pop idea that there might be a few slot machines in a little business in Black Hawk. Well, then all of a sudden, the big dollars started coming in, and my question is, you know, maybe we should start asking, where are these investors coming from that are putting million-dollar extraction plants into our city, or at least saying that that's how much the equipment costs? Maybe we start looking at who's putting up that fund, or who's putting up those funds, because it gets a little scary. Second of all, you start thinking about Black Hawk, there is still a town of Black Hawk, there's not a community of Black Hawk anymore. You know, they went from little tiny casinos to now great big 30-story buildings, and the people gave up a lot to get that into their city, and whether they realized it or not, it kind of went past them pretty quickly before they were to get involved. So I ask you guys, you have some time now, let's not make a quick decision, I know last week you talked about making a special use permit, hopefully that's not just kicking it down the road, that it just becomes one more step people need to go through, but it's going to happen anyway. So, I thank you for your decision last week, and I ask your real sincere work on this project, even if it means extending it further. I know you've talked about it a lot, but maybe you can't talk about it enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Kelly Brooks, B.R.O.O.K.S., I live at 4100 Dudley Street. Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm here this evening to thank City Council for providing the special session last Monday night, and for your thoughtful consideration of the objections raised by so many in this community. Your interest in accommodating citizen frustration is appreciated by those of us deeply concerned about the proliferation of a commercialized pot industry and its impact on our kids. I realize that council has a lot on its plate during the next few months, with multiple ballot measures and a budget review and approval process. However, I'd ask that you utilize the emergency moratorium period to its fullest, not just to address the concerns of one particular neighborhood and one particular project, but to better understand the desires of the community at large as it relates to this issue. Based on the turnout to the meeting last Monday, it's clear that the existing regulations fall short of addressing all angles of the implementation of Amendment 64. I encourage you to give this issue the time, effort, and consideration that's required in order to ensure that the true desires of the citizens are fully considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Jennifer Yates, I live at 3700 Miller Street, and I just want to address a couple things that came out of last week, comment was made that there's been no issues with any of the stores or whatever so far, and I just want to point out that there have been issues. Three Kings Dab Supply, they are, were cited for unlawful activities, including promoting of onsite events where marijuana was encouraged, stating that that was their right, and they would continue to do that. So my question is, how will Wheat Ridge stop any pot shop from throwing up a patio, calling it private property, and allowing patrons to consume marijuana products there? The second thing is, is I have children who play on Wheat Ridge soccer teams, I spent two and a half hours at Paramount Park last Tuesday, the entire time, there was a horrible stench coming from across the street at Critical Therapy on 27th Avenue. It smelled somewhere between a dead skunk and a musky fox, it was horrible. That night, there were 80-plus children in that park playing soccer, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, playing soccer. On Saturday, we have other teams coming from other communities that are witnessing that same thing, and I ask you, is that really what we want for our children and for our community? Lastly, I just, do your due diligence, EBU is the last people that we should be taking building code advice and other advice from, we need to look at who they are and what they're coming into our community with. Pot shops don't belong in our neighborhood, next to our schools, our parks, and our neighborhoods, I know they're not going away, but they don't belong that close.
Jennifer, would you spell your last name for us, please?
Y.A.T.E.S.
Y.A.T.E.S., thank you. Any one else?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
The comment was made by one of the speakers that, about the dab shop, Mr. Dahl, those aren't allowed in the city of Wheat Ridge anyway, correct? And so, if they do try to open up illegally, we shut them down, is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is declared approved. Let's move on to public hearings and ordinance on second reading, starting with Council Bill Number 10, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Council Bill Number 10-2014, An Ordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 4, 2014 election, concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate and revenue bonds to finance public works and parks and recreation infrastructure projects. At issue, City Council directed staff to move forward with a ballot question requesting a 1% increase to the city's sales and use tax rate and revenue bonds. To include this question in the 2014 ballot, the City Council must set the final ballot language and submit to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September 5th. Setting the ballot language by ordinance requires a first reading on August 11th, and a second reading and public hearing on August 25th to meet this deadline. I am going to go ahead and read the ballot language into the record. So, ballot language. Shall the city of Wheat Ridge taxes be increased by up to $6.4 million annually in the first full fiscal year, and by whatever additional amounts are raised annually thereafter, by increasing the rate of sales and use tax levied by the city by 1%? And shall the city of Wheat Ridge debt be increased by up to $40 million, with a maximum repayment cost not to exceed $68.5 million? With the proceeds of such debt and such taxes to be used for, critical facility, infrastructure, and economic development projects to allow Wheat Ridge to operate, maintain, and improve roads, bridges, and stormwater, and floodplain drainage systems? Construction, installation, operation, and maintenance of parks and recreation improvements, including revitalization of Anderson Park to improve its overall effectiveness and efficiency as a multi-generational family activity park, including improvements to the outdoor pool and facilities, and the Anderson Recreation Building? Such increase in the sales and use tax rate to begin on January 1, 2015. Such debt to be sold in one or more series at a price above, below, or equal to the principal amount of such debt, and on such terms and condition as the city may determine, including provisions for redemption or refunding of the debt prior to maturity, with or without payment of premium of not to exceed 3%. And shall the city be authorized to issue debt to refund the debt authorized if, after the issuance of such refunding debt, the total outstanding principal amount of all debt issued pursuant to this question does not exceed the maximum principal amount authorized, and if all debt issued pursuant to this question is issued on terms that do not exceed the repayment cost authorized in this question, and shall the revenues raised by such sales and use tax rate increase and proceeds of such debt, any other revenue used to pay such debt and investment income thereon be collected and spent by the city as a voter-approved revenue change pursuant to Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado Constitution?
Thank you, Mr. Pond. I am going to open a public hearing, do we have staff report?
No additional report unless there's questions.
And I think we have some people signed up to speak? Okay, all right. This is for later, okay. Okay, we do have people, public wishes to speak, and I'm going to call you in order just to make it easier for the clerk, Louise Tref Gangler, thank you Louise, and following Louise will be Kim, and then John Clark.
Yeah, Louise Tref Gangler, 7335 West 33rd Avenue. Regarding this measure, I have some concerns that the proposed tax increase makes the Wheat Ridge tax higher than either Arvada or Denver, which I think would be discouraging to new businesses coming into the city, particularly chains which could go somewhere else. And I'm also wondering about the allocation, it's the first time I've heard this exact wording, is there anything going to plan to go to sidewalks in other areas besides 38th, such as Wadsworth, where there are practically no sidewalks? And how much of this proposed tax increase is slated to go to the 38th Avenue development?
Thank you. Ms. Calomino?
Good evening, Kim Calomino, C.A.L.O.M.I.N.O., 4070 Dover Street. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. I hope for a unanimous vote for our council to support putting this on the ballot. I strongly support an increase in sales tax, I think your surveys, your polling, and your community outreach has also indicated that there's strong support for this in the community, that there's many things that we've neglected, and many things that we'd like to do more forward-looking, that this sales tax increase would allow, help us carry out the vision that you've all helped and past councils have helped craft. So, I strongly support it, I hope you will all unanimously support it, and I think perhaps during your discussion, it might be important to discuss how sales tax is not the only tax that many cities include, so whether it's Aurora, Arvada, neighboring communities, Denver, where you have additional taxes imposed that would equalize whether or not we are equal to Arvada or Denver. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Hi, my name is John Clark, live at 4665 Swadley Street, here in Wheat Ridge. Regarding this Bill 10-2014, Mr. Pond explained it so very eloquently, but so very lengthy that I don't think anybody understands it. Basically, what I get out of it is, it's a ballot question for an increase of 1% sales tax, and to try to float a $40 million bond and put the city in debt. That $40 million bond, I see as a repayment of $68 million, or 68.5. That equates to almost $30 million in debt servicing, and I think this is why people like Dave Ramsey and Suzy Orman say that debt is a four-layer word. People say the city's behind, about $6 million in infrastructure spending, I realize that, so we're going to ask the voters if we should spend almost $30 million just servicing debt. We don't get anything for that debt, we don't get any, no goods, no services, that $30 million is just interest on debt. So, how do we pay $30 million in debt servicing if we fell behind $6 million in simple infrastructure? Please, I ask you, don't saddle my kids with interest on this debt, city doesn't need to go into. $30 million is a lot of money. Please move or vote to postpone indefinitely Council Bill 10-2014. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions, are there any, is anyone else care to speak? Are there any questions of council or statements regarding what we've heard? Mr. DeTulio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I understand the concerns about debt service tonight, last year, the council looked at doing this, but we didn't do the public outreach that we've done this year with phone survey, five-town meetings to talk about what the citizens, about what they really wanted for the city, and the $40 million in bonding, what we've heard is that people who have a three-year-old or a four-year-old don't want to wait 20 years before we do some things in the city, for example, Anderson Park, for example, the hook ramps at 32nd and Youngfield. So I was going to ask the city manager to detail the $40 million, where that will go towards infrastructure, and one thing I wanted to mention to the previous speaker, that this $40 million does not address 38th Avenue cost, this is other infrastructure projects excluding 38th Avenue, and I will ask the city manager to maybe detail those projects that we've listed in the $40 million.
Well, the discussion with City Council was, you know, this isn't specific in the question, but the thoughts of City Council was that the initial $40 million could be used for the revitalization of Anderson Park, also, as you mentioned, Mr. DeTulio, some infrastructure off I-70 and 32nd, Youngfield, what you called hook ramps to facilitate redevelopment of a, or development of a commercial center to increase the city's tax base. And then, I think the third area would be to catch up with our delayed and deferred maintenance of our streets and drainage and sidewalks, would make up the initial bond amount, and then there'd be, the full one penny would provide additional funds also to help with other parks and public works, street and infrastructure projects, in addition to that, on a annual, year-to-year basis.
And the other thing that we had mentioned at the study session was, I believe we had talked about, there's 250 homes that were put in the floodplain by urban drainage and flood control by the state, and those folks are paying very high insurance rates right now because they're in the floodplain, and we were looking at, and council agreed to this too, especially the council members from District 4, because it affects their constituents, that we would be looking at drainage projects along Clear Creek, Leaning Gulch, to help take those folks out of the floodplain so they can go back to a normal interest, or I'm sorry, normal insurance rate versus $1,000 to $2,000 a year for insurance because of they're in the floodplain. So, all of this money, $40 million, why it may be debt service, we're trying to get some projects done now while we're still breathing, and we can get the city back on its feet quicker when it comes to floods in the floodplain, drainage in the city, the hook ramps at I-70 and Youngfield would actually be brand-new hook ramps to connect to I-70 from 32nd Avenue, say, turning left to go on I-70 West, you'd have a brand-new hook ramp, and then also, infrastructure within the city of Wheat Ridge in general, sidewalks and street repair. So, based on that, and based on the public outreach this council has done with the public, I'm going to support to put on the ballot tonight.
Ms. Davis?
I just wanted to add a couple other comments, because I think it's important that these issues come up and that we address them, and I know one of the questions is, is this raises our tax to perhaps a little higher than our neighboring cities? And again, one thing that we need to emphasize is, we can't just look at the tax of our neighboring cities of just sales tax, I think the important thing is, we need to also understand, right now, our city, the property tax mill levy is 1.83 mils, which is significantly lower than all of our neighboring cities, if I'm correct. Patrick, is it 14 mils for Golden?
Yeah, Golden is just under 14 mils.
Yeah, just under 14 mils, and that 1.83 mils equals about $36 per average household for our taxpayers that they pay to the city for.
A year.
A year for taxes. So, that's one way that our residents and, you know, our residents and businesses are not feeling as much. not feeling as much the tax burden. The other thing is, is a lot of our neighboring cities also do have fees attached. If it's a stormwater and drainage fee or those types of fees, which here in the city of Wheat Ridge, we don't have. So we did feel that this tax increase was a fair, fair way to gather our, the revenues that our city needs. So we need to look at the bigger picture. And I also think with that in mind, again, we could say neighboring city of Lakewood, but if you look at most of their major shopping areas, they do have property improvement fees that in some of those areas changes the, you know, when it comes with their state tax and that, it's up to over 9% in some of those areas. So it's easy to just say we're higher than everybody, but then I think we need to look at the other aspects to really understand that we're just getting in line with it and we're doing it in a different way than possibly mils, fees, and property improvement fees.
Anyone else? Mr. Irvin?
Thank you. This is a question for the city attorney. In the ballot language, it talks about critical facility, infrastructure, and economic development projects to allow Wheat Ridge to operate, maintain, improve roads, bridges, and stormwater and flood drainage systems. The way that that's worded indicates to me that the economic development projects would be those that would allow Wheat Ridge to maintain, improve roads, bridges, and stormwater and the like. It wouldn't necessarily be in general economic development projects. Or is there a way to reword that so it isn't? That's one aspect that I'm concerned about. The other aspect is, it talks about critical facility, infrastructure, and economic development. So does the word "critical" carry through to each one of those elements? And if it is, what is critical economic development projects?
Taking the second question first, I think critical projects of whatever sort are as determined by the council. It would be the council that would determine whether something's critical and therefore, you know, is eligible for the funding that would be provided here. I recognize that's a subjective determination, but those determinations have to be made and it's the council that makes them. And so I would answer that that's, that's how you define that. And as we would go through the budgeting process, that's really where council makes those kinds of decisions. And I think it's appropriate for council to be aware that the ballot language, if it passes, says "critical," and then use your own subjective determination to determine whether you feel something's critical enough to justify that funding in the appropriations process. Regarding your first question, I'd read the word "critical" to modify facility, infrastructure, and economic development projects because that's just how the English language operated. There's not a sort of intervening clause or some kind of disjunctive. I do think, however, that the way that bullet is written, "facility, infrastructure, and economic development projects, once funded, could allow the city to operate, et cetera, roads, bridges," I don't believe it's restricted to that because an economic development project, for example, might bring in other revenues. And I don't think it has to be spent on the storm and flood, stormwater and floodplain drainage systems. I think those, an economic development project could allow or could generate funds. You could spend some of the money generated by this tax increase for an economic development project, some kind of new business, that itself would then generate additional revenue that would allow you to maintain roads and bridges. I don't think you would, all of the money has to be spent, probably taking too long to say this, for the road or the bridge. It could be spent on economic development, some tech company that's going to come in and as a result produce additional revenues that you could spend on the roads and on the bridges.
Okay. It's not the cleanest way that I'd like it, but that makes sense.
Okay. You know, there's something I would like to say. We have looked at a sales tax increase before and in the past. And the time comes when a city seriously has to look at what we've called deferred maintenance. And I've got, the city manager provided me a list of this deferred maintenance. And I want you to know that this is really the crux of this. This problem is that this small city, it's relatively small, it has a small amount of population, as well, we're not densely populated, as well as we do not have a strong retail component. So therefore, you've got to balance what is a relatively small income with a lot of needs. And the maintenance, and I'm going to just bore you to death and read you this maintenance list, so you can understand how high this is. Pavement rehabilitation, $3,999,000. Sidewalk ADA deficiencies, $500,000. Bridge deficiencies, 200, excuse me, $320,000. That's 4,000, I mean, $4,810,000 right there. Now, we have proposed capital improvement. Street reconstruction, $51 million. Did I read that right? 51 million? Yes. Street pedestrian and landscape improvements, $28 million. Bike ped master plan implementation, is that $75 million? Is it really? Wow. Storm drain improvements, $44 million. Municipal maintenance facility, that's our maintenance facility where we keep our trucks, which I happen to know is like practically falling down to the ground. $8 million. Power line undergrounding, you know, all those lines we've got all over and we're always saying, gee, I'd like to not see those. Power line undergrounding, $20 million. Recreation center addition, $6 million. Park improvements, $20 million. Civic center, city hall expansion. You know, we're kind of, the city hall is sitting on top of each other. The police department, we're all, they're all crawling all over each other. Total of those two, $267 million. You can say, that's kind of crazy. Cut it down a third. Oh, then you got 200 million. Cut it down in half, 150 million. What I'm saying is that this sales tax increase is, first of all, we'll go to the first $5 million, and then we've got to start looking at what else do we need to do to keep this the beautiful city that we'd like it to be? As well as to continually afford projects that are important to our citizens, our senior citizens, our food banks, our, I mean, it's a big job. And so obviously, I am hoping that the council will vote yes on this, as well as the public when it hits the polls. So I believe we're ready for the motion unless somebody else has something to say. Mr. DiTullio?
I would just add that the voters of Wheat Ridge have been pretty good about reading the information and understanding the information. And while this ballot language is long because it has a lot of taper requirements, I've seen the voters of Wheat Ridge always really come through and understand what they're voting on. Pass or fail, they know what they're voting on. And so I think that it's been worded the best we can to make it cleanly as possible with taper requirements. Taxpayer bill arrives, we have to say certain language in here which makes it sound legalese. But I have full faith that the voters in Wheat Ridge will read this, understand it, talk to their neighbors, talk to their friends, and talk to their elected officials, and make an informed decision in November.
Mr. Pond, I believe we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Madam.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Dahl, do we need an ordinance number for this?
Yes, we do. It's on second reading. Thanks. Do we have one?
Thank you. Yes, this is ordinance number 1555. I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2014, An Ordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at the November 4, 2014 election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate and revenue bonds to finance public works and parks and recreation infrastructure projects on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
I'll second that.
I forgot to close the public hearing. Public hearing's closed. May we have the council vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item number two. Mr. DiTullio?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 11-2014, An Ordinance Submitting a Ballot Question to the Voters of the City at November 4, 2014 election concerning the street width designation for 38th Avenue, for portions of 38th Avenue. On July 14, City Council held a public hearing and designated a street width for 38th Avenue Quarter Project and directed staff to prepare an ordinance to submit the street width question to the voters. To submit a ballot question to the voters at November 4, 2014 election, the city must have finalized ballot language by Jefferson County Clerk, to Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September 5. To meet this deadline, an ordinance would be scheduled for first reading August 11th, with second reading and public hearing scheduled for the 25th, which is tonight. And I would like to also read the ballot question into the title or into the record. The following ballot question is hereby referred to the electorate of the city at November 2014 election. Shall a street width for 38th Avenue between Uppam Street and Marshall Street be established by city council in order to implement the vision of 38th Avenue Quarter Plan to revitalize the 38th Avenue Quarter between Uppam Street and Marshall Street into a Main Street Business District to include wider pedestrian sidewalks, amenity zones with landscaping and seating areas, on-street parking, public art, and community gathering places, such that the street width for 38th Avenue be established at 47 feet from Uppam Street to High Court, 41 feet from High Court to 230 feet east of High Court, and then 35 feet from 230 feet east of High Court to Marshall Street. And I ask the city clerk to please assign an ordinance number.
This will be ordinance number 1556.
Let's open the public hearing. Do we have any staff report?
No, Mayor.
I see we do have some people signed up for public comment. Let's start with Louise Gangler.
Louise Treff Gangler, 7335 West 33rd Avenue. My question is, where will this money come from? You've already gone through a lot of neat, other needs in the city. It's my opinion that a disproportionate amount of money has already been spent on 38th Avenue. We have many, many other needs in comparison to those, you know, sidewalks being one. So just wondering, where is this money coming from?
Thank you. Kim Calomino?
Kim Calomino, 4070 Dover Street. Again, I would, I'm pleased that council is bringing this forward to the ballot. I would hope for a unanimous vote again, so that you're demonstrating to the citizens that you think this is an important issue that the entire city has the opportunity to vote on. It's a completely separate issue, as we all know from the sales tax question. Sales tax is an important question. This is an important question. They don't necessarily bind themselves to each other. But I would point out that in our, our community meetings and in the polling, we did see strong support for moving the city forward. You are moving us in a strong and positive direction, and that direction is supported and hoped to be continued. And I think offering the citizens the opportunity to vote on this is a step in that direction. And I would encourage you to show your support by unanimous vote on this ballot question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark? And Ms. Voss will follow Mr. Clark.
I'm still John Clark, and as long as somebody didn't get a call from my wife, I still reside at 4665 Swadley. And I want to start out by saying that I'm not against anything on 38th Avenue. I'm obviously for a brighter, more beautiful 38th and all of Wheat Ridge. I actually own a property that sits one block off of 38th Avenue. It's on 39th about Reed. So revitalizing 38th Avenue only helps my property values. So I would love to see smart growth on 38th Avenue. The only problem, I think we can accomplish this without spending the $10 million that we don't have. Major street design changes, I just don't quite understand where we're going to get the money. I'm following the same line that, I just don't see where the money's coming from. So I did read the ballot question, read all the extras, which I don't think everybody else does. But the language in the ballot question actually intrigues me a little bit. The word "vision" is very interesting language for a ballot question that is put to the people since it doesn't mention whose vision it is we're voting on and what exactly that vision is. I spent some time at work today looking up the word "vision," 15, 20 minutes, and it kind of blew my mind. But the fact that there is no price tag listed where the dollars for this vision are going to come from is also kind of intriguing. The fact that it asks for me to vote for a street width designation, it talks about what it would be, but doesn't mention how we're going to pay for it. Doesn't mention the width of the lanes being 10 feet, which is, coming from a tow truck driver, quite dangerous. That's just my point of view. I spent a lot of time outside my truck in traffic. I'm in traffic lanes all the time. I'd like to see a 12-foot lane. CDOT says that the max width of my truck can be 8' 6", and my trucks are pushing that limit, every one of them. My Dodge out here, I just measured, mirror to mirror, is actually over 8' 6". The width of the truck is within the 8' 6". Mirror to mirror is over 8' 6". And I also measured when I got here, the parking space that I pulled into, and it's nine feet wide. So literally, the lanes are, we're talking one foot wider than the parking. Other than my tow trucks, when CDOT says the max width can be 8' 6", you know, that means fire trucks, they're at 8' 2" or 8' 4", an entire array of UPS, FedEx, garbage trucks, ambulances, semi-truck driver deliveries, everybody. So if people want three lanes, that's fine. If people want four lanes, doesn't matter. But those lanes need to be 12-foot for safety reasons. And I just don't really understand why you have to spend $10 million changing the design of the street to, to change the width of the lanes or to put three lanes instead of four. So I'm going to ask you to please vote to postpone indefinitely Council Bill Number 11-2014. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Vivian Voss, that's V as in Victor, O as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. I'm very satisfied that we're taking this to the vote of the people. There was a petition that brought it to council to mandate it. The city charter mandates it, so as long as we've got to have it, I would like to speak to the legal wording that's in here. Number one, if we're going to have to go with the wording, three paragraphs on ordinance 1555, due to taper requirements, maybe we can get this other ordinance, 1556, down to something more reasonable. I see several words in here that just do not speak at all to the legality of what we're asking for on this. I would also speak to the word "vision." It seems a wonderment to me why that's in there, and I would ask that to be struck. Actually, if you read the first sentence, shall a street width for 38th Avenue between Uppam Street and Marshall Street be changed, not established? And then the next four lines be eliminated totally? We've got the word "vision," as I spoke to. We've got the word "revitalize," that's not legal. We've got the three, four words, Main Street Business District, that's not legal. Let's just get rid of that four lines in there and conclude with "to include wider pedestrian sidewalks, et cetera," as it appears down the rest of the language. I'm a little disappointed, but understand, maybe you had too many words before and you couldn't put these words in. But I think it's important to the public to know, if we're changing to 47 feet, 41 feet, and 35 feet, why can you not also include what the diminishing is? Is 47 going from 55 feet to 47 feet? Or... Is 47 going from 55 feet to 47 feet, or what? That would just be a little bit of enlightenment that I would like to see in the wordings. And I don't believe any of this has anything to do with Tabor requirements, so I think the folks on City Council and the attorneys involved could just eliminate a lot of the extraneous words that we don't need to be reading through for a proper vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anybody, is there anyone else who wishes to speak who hasn't actually signed up? Are there questions of council or statements in regard to... Do you want to wait till we have a, a vote on it? I mean, a...
I was just going to answer a question.
Okay. Mr. DiTullio?
So some folks have asked why we're doing this tonight, putting it on the ballot, and I wanted to clarify one thing, that it wasn't 19 people that put this to a ballot, to a vote. It was, in the area that 38th Avenue is being looked at for the implementation of this vision, there is 42 properties, and 19 properties of the 42 protested the changes. So that's what kicked it to a vote of the people per our city charter. So it's not 19 people out of 32,000, it's 19 properties out of 42 properties within that area. I understand that some of the comments about the vision and the, and the price, and I had talked to some of fellow councilors about it. If you wanted to, because this refers to a design that council has approved, if you wanted to add the 9.3 million as part of the ballot question in a cost of, and then I also wanted to ask if council wanted to either maintain or remove the word "vision" as part of the main motion, but that's for discussion. I'm not advocating either way. I think if, since this ballot question talks about a particular design that's been approved by council and drafted up by Intellicy, and it doesn't, has, it doesn't have a funding mechanism, they're right, but it also, there is a price tag to this. Do we want to add a price tag to it? And then also, do you want to remove the word "vision," just say, implement the corridor plan? So that would be a couple of questions I had for council as we move forward.
Any other response to the public inquiry, so that, before we move on to the motion and close the public hearing?
I would just like to talk about the word "vision." Actually, the, this vision that we're talking about has been talked about in the city for a number of years, and we've had innumerable public meetings where people came and chose the part of the vision that was important to them. It's on our, it's on the city website, the entire plan is, the entire vision is. I encourage people to go look at it, but this is a vision of awakening Wheat Ridge and bringing it to its full potential. We've been kind of a sleeping city, it's time to wake up, and that's what we're trying to do here. So this is a vision. It's a vision that the people support through the polls, and people have participated in, and council has approved. Thank you.
Did Mr. Urban?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the use of the phrase "Main Street Business District," as though that's something in existence, based on the way that this is currently worded, but yet we don't have a, a Main Street Business District in existence. So my concern is that we're referencing an entity that is currently not in existence, and that, to me, just doesn't seem proper in a, in a ballot question to reference a district that is not in existence. And it's not as though it's pending, it's just, it's not even there. So why, why would we have that term of art in there if it's not in existence? And is that legal to have that in there? I guess that would be a question for the city attorney.
It's, it's illegal to have it in. This is a referred ballot question. Under the charter, the council can refer any question to the people, so this is not a referendum where you're, you've actually got an ordinance you're referring. This, this is one of those situations in which the council can choose or not to refer a question, so that question is wholly within your discretion. So in terms of whether it's legal or not, yes, it's legal to use any terminology, really. It's fair to question whether that terminology is, is clear to people. Your, your job in creating a ballot question is always to make sure, at a minimum, that the, the meaning of yes and no is understood, but beyond that, it's, it's really a matter of your style and how you feel that it will be best understood, and that's up to you.
And I think that it's clear as well that I'm concerned that there is not a price tag in here, and that we're, not only is there not a price tag, there is also not an explanation of how we're going to pay for this, because my concern is that we get to a situation where this ballot question is approved, but yet we don't have a plan for how to pay for it. So I guess that question for the city manager is, if this is approved, how will we pay for the $9.3 million improvements?
We'll have to have additional discussions with City Council to make that determination.
So we don't, we're putting something on the ballot we don't have a way to pay for?
Well, at this point, as, as you remember, City Council has set the street width, held a public hearing to have a street width designation for 38th Avenue. So this is, and you decided to put it on the ballot. We haven't made, we haven't come up that, the, the sources of the funds at this point, but that's just an additional discussion. Because of the charter restriction or section on street width designation, once you have a public hearing to set the street width, you have to start construction within, within a year or so. That discussion, that discussion's going to have to happen very quickly with council to determine if funds could be found to, for this project. So...
Are you saying, Mr. Goff, that it's, it's part of the process, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going ahead with it? What it means is to go ahead with it down the road a piece, or wherever it happens, that this is part of the process that has to occur?
Correct.
It's a legality?
Correct. The city charter requires that any time a, the flow line of a street changes width, it must be designated by City Council, and the City Council chose to take it to the vote of the people.
So I guess my next question on that same line is, then where in the process are we required, because we've already allocated additional dollars, $750,000, to this project. So at what point in the project do we define where the money is to fund this project? Because we've already been allocating money to a project that we yet haven't identified the funding source of. So yes, it is a legal part of the process to do the street width designation, but it's also a legal part of the process in any project to say, this is how we're going to fund it, which we haven't. And that's, to me, information a voter would need to have to say, oh, this is what you're going to do, this is how you're going to pay for it. So what, at what point in the process do we have to identify the money?
If, if this passes, I suggest and recommend we have a meeting as, as soon as we can after the election and start talking about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Was there any other comments regard, in response? Thank you, Mr. Wooden?
Yes, I'd like to just state that this is one step in many steps of a process that's been going on for many years. This has been going on at least 10 years, probably back as long as 14 years, through many different city councils, through many different mayors and processes, and this is one more step getting us closer to the revitalization of 38th Avenue. And this is a street width designation to, as part of that vision, for the, what it said right here, for the Main Street Business District, for the revitalization of the corridor. And what we had seen from our public comments was that the city wants to move forward. People want to see Wheat Ridge become more than it is now. And when you look at our surrounding cities, Lakewood, Golden, look at those downtowns, those, those had a lot of changes also. They did have changes to the, the infrastructure of the downtown in order to revitalize it. And this is another step, the street width designation, in the revitalization of what we're trying to do in Wheat Ridge.
Okay, can I close the public hearing and...
So based on what I've heard from Ms. Wooden and Mr. Fitzgerald, I, I would actually say that that word "vision" is probably okay, because if you go on the website, there is a design and there is a plan, and it is a vision, it's somebody's vision, whether it's yours or not, that's irrelevant, there is a vision. So if you don't like that vision, you vote no. If you like that vision, you vote yes on this, because we're setting the width of the street based on the city charter. So I think the word "vision" is fine, because it has gone through multiple iterations of council members and mayors, and that vision, you have a chance to vote on now as a citizen of Wheat Ridge. I also think that the Main Street Business District is okay the way it's worded in here, because we're revitalizing it into a Main Street Business District. So the word "into," to me, says, if this passes, we're going to convert this area, 38th Avenue, into a business district. So I think that's telling folks, it's not there now, but it could be if this passes. So really, the only thing left, if anybody wanted to make an amendment, if that's their desire, would be adding a cost involved for that vision that's on the city website, as Mr. Fitzgerald's mentioned. So what I'll do is, if, once the public hearing's closed, I'll make the motion as is, and if somebody wants to make an amendment, that's your call. But I think the, the word "vision," it is a vision, and whether you agree with it or not, you can vote that way in the privacy of your own home.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
So I just wanted to add one more thing to Mr. DiTullio's comments, because, and, and kind of addressing Mr. Urban's comment on the Main Street Business District, because I think the one thing that does make it okay in this language is it says "the vision of." So it's not saying the already existing Street Business District, it's the vision of a Main Street Business District. So again, I think that word "vision" kind of answers the question to the Main Street Business District, it's not saying the already existing. So I just wanted to add that comment as well.
Okay, I think I'm ready to close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move to approve. I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2014, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4th, 2014 election concerning a street width designation for portions of 38th Avenue on second reading that take effect immediately upon adoption.
I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Starker. It's been moved and seconded. Can we have any more discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Urban?
I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like to move that the ballot language at the end of the question include the phrase "at a cost not to exceed $9.3 million."
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, the amendment to add the phrase "at a cost not to exceed $9.2 million?"
$9.3.
Is there a discussion on that? Please pull the console.
Motion fails two to six, with council members Wooden, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, Davis, and Starker voting no.
Okay, can we move on to vote for the main motion? As stated earlier, please pull the console.
One second, please.
Oh, you need to clear?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number three, which is, Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 47-2014, a resolution approving a four-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedications for property zoned, industrial employment, i.e., residential one, R1, and mixed-use commercial TOD at 12,000 Ridge Road, case number MS-14-04, Wheat Ridge Ward Station. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a four-lot subdivision plat for property zoned, i.e., R1 and mixed-use commercial TOD at 12,000 Ridge Road, formerly West 50th Place. The purpose of the request is to prepare the site for development of the Wheat Ridge Ward Road commuter line rail station. A special use permit application has been reviewed by staff as public transit stations are a special use in the industrial employment zone district. Because no written objections were filed during the 10-day administrative posting period, this case can be approved administratively and will not require City Council action.
Okay, this is a public hearing once again. I'm going to open the public hearing, and the nature of this, I do need to swear in anybody who's going to speak. Is there anyone else who's going to speak? I have somebody here. Oh, I got a name here. Patrick Stanley? All right, any...
I want to speak if this question...
Okay. Let me give you the, do you swear to, or affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you very much. May I have the staff presentation?
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I am here to present case number MS-14-02, which is a request for approval of a subdivision plat for property at 12,000 Ridge Road. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, the zoning ordinance and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met. Therefore, council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So this is an aerial photo of the vicinity. The property we're looking at is outlined in green, and again, this is a request for approval of a subdivision on property zoned, i.e., industrial employment, residential one, R2, mixed-use commercial TOD, and the purpose of it is to accommodate the Wheat Ridge commuter line rail station at 12,000 Ridge Road. So taking a look at this aerial, just to help orient you a little bit north as to the top, 52nd Avenue runs across here, this location. We've got Ridge Road down here, which dead ends at Tabor Street, Ward over on the very left-hand portion of the screen, and 50th Place, which comes in and dead ends at the property. I would note, as part of the construction, that street will be punched through to meet with Ridge, and that's why we're, we've readdressed, the property is 12,000 Ridge. So again, it's located in the northeast, northwest quadrant of the city, and again, the intent is that it be developed into the end-of-line station for the RTD Gold Line. In 2004, Colorado voters approved the expansion of mass transit across the Denver metro area. The $2.2 billion project is comprised of the East and Gold Rail Lines commuter rail maintenance facility and the Westminster segment of the Northwest Rail Line. So this is a diagram that's taken off RTD's website. It does show the construction of the Gold Line, which starts at Union Station and goes through Denver, Adams, and Jefferson County. There are seven stops on the line, with three of, three of those located in Arvada, and then the one in Wheat Ridge, which is at the end of the line at this location right here. This is a copy of the zoning map, just to help direct you again. The property is located generally in this vicinity, in this purplish area. It is an interesting area with a variety of land uses. To the east, we've got residentially zoned property, which includes an alpaca farm and neighborhood zoned R2. To the southwest, our parcel zoned, i.e., industrial employment. West of the site, again, our parcel zoned, i.e., in use for general industrial. And then to the northwest of the subject site is vacant property, which was rezoned to mixed-use commercial TOD a couple of years ago. So this is a rendering of the station, and you can see the improvements on there, including the Ridge Road being punched through. This is Taft Court, which would extend north, 52nd Avenue. The, really, the only proposed structures are accessory to the rail line, and those would include a driver relief station, electrical and mechanical rooms, storage space and screened equipment areas. There will also be two kiosks and two platform canopies constructed adjacent to the plaza and platform areas. The proposal includes irrigated, irrigated sprinkling, irrigated landscaping throughout the site, lighting for both pedestrians and the parking lot, signage, and so on. Roadway improvements include the extension of streets, including the construction of Ridge Road east to Tabor and the construction of Taft Court south from 52nd Avenue. Ridge Road east to Tabor and the construction of Taft Court south from 52nd Avenue. Those would include public improvements in addition to a bike lane installed along what was, what is going to be Ridge Road. So, RTD has acquired several parcels in the vicinity through purchases and other proceedings to assemble the development parcel, and the plating area, including the right-of-way is about nine acres, and by the time we get through all dedications and drainage improvements and so on, that the actual site area gets down to about six acres. Because there are numerous parcels, we are requiring the plat to subdivide and then consolidate the pieces. That'll be the ultimate development site. And as I indicated previously, some of the right-of-way is being dedicated by plat. There's also some other right-of-way, which is being accepted by separate instrument to, so those folks didn't have to participate in the plat effort. This is Sheet 1 of the plat, which is the declaration sheet, and it contains kind of the normal stuff we always see with signature blocks and legal descriptions and so on. The second page, and this is turned counterclockwise, or clockwise, I'm sorry, from what's in your packet, with this time, north again is to the top, but we've got Ridge Road that comes through here and Taft Court extending up to 52nd Avenue. So, they are showing four lots on the plat, one lot north of Ridge Road, and three on the south. The northern lot corresponds with the parking lot improvements. The two lots on the south will encompass vacant landscaped area, other, let's see, what else? Plaza area, the ticket kiosk, and so on. There's an existing easement that you can see trance goes across the property at this location, which is being vacated by the plat, and also Fruitdale sanitary sewer easement in that same alignment. So, I colored this up. Again, it's just the same sheet from your plat document. This time, I colored the right-of-way in there that's being dedicated. So, again, right-of-way for Taft Court and Ridge Road are being dedicated, and again, right-of-way for Ridge extends from the western perimeter of the property east to Tabor Street and connecting with Ridge, so that we've got a nice alignment and through traffic that can go all the way through Ward Road. All of the agencies contacted can provide service to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Those would include valley water. Fruitdale Sanitation, they've already done some mainline installation in Ridge, and there will be another mainline extended in Taft. Arvada Fire Protection District can serve the property, of course, with improvements. They have noted that streets need to be marked as fire lanes if there's no parking along them. Wheat Ridge Public Works has reviewed and approved drainage reports, traffic studies, and the plat document, and Exile Energy can serve as well. Planning Commission did review this at a public hearing held on August 7 and gave a recommendation of approval, and staff is supporting this request. We've concluded that all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met, that the plat will facilitate construction of the Gold Line end-of-line station, and that utilities and other agencies can serve the property. There is one condition that was not included in your staff report, and I believe Mr. Dahl would like to address that.
Yes, yes, if I could. Pardon me. Customarily with a subdivision, after a subdivision's approved, we, pardon me, we sign up a subdivision improvements agreement with the developer. That's something that happens administratively after the plat has been approved here and before the plat can be recorded. And a subdivision improvements agreement merely guarantees that the public improvements, roads, streets, sidewalk, curb and gutter, things like that, will be built according to specific city specifications, that they'll be funded, that there will be engineering oversight by the Public Works Department in the construction of those facilities, and importantly, that they will be, there will be a guarantee in the event the subdivider commences the subdivision then disappears, and we've got a bunch of lots and we need to build roads. That's a critical need for a subdivision improvements agreement, that there be that financial guarantee. Here, of course, we have RTD and their concessionaire, a concessionaire that'll run this facility for some 40 years, fairly substantial parties, but nevertheless, we need that kind of security. However, I got a call just this last week from, the attorney from RTD, saying that as a governmental entity, they had some difficulty with granting the guarantee in the typical form that we require in a subdivision improvements agreement. That caused me to spend some time comparing the IGA we already have with RTD, the city entered into an IGA with RTD in June of 2011, that frankly covers most of the issues that would otherwise be covered in an SIA. What improvements are we going to build? How are they going to be built? What are the specifications? Will Mr. Brink's department, you know, be able to inspect? So, you're about 75% of the way through the material that would normally be addressed by an SIA, but there are a few things that that 2011 IGA didn't address. The guarantee of public improvements, importantly, landscaping warranty, and a couple of things that are way down on the food chain, cost attorney fees if there's a breach of the agreement. It's going to be my suggestion, when you get to motion time, that, and I've spoken with the RTD attorney about this, that we handle this in the form of an addendum to the 2011 IGA, because that IGA covers, as I said, about 75% of the things that would normally be in a SIA, and it does other things, too. It sets up the fact that there will be this station. I think that's an easy way to do it. IGAs have to be approved by the council by resolution. Of course, this is a resolution, so we can certainly add to this resolution, and I'll have the language for you if you're inclined to accept it. We can have an addition to the motion that says you further approve, an addendum to the IGA dealing with these issues in a form approved by my office. Then it won't have to come back to you. If you're at all concerned about that, we can change the motion to say, approve this on the condition that an addendum to that IGA be brought back for you. I will tell you this, but for the fact that we'd be using an IGA addendum to do this, you wouldn't see it. You never see SIAs. They don't come to the council for approval. Instead, you approve subdivisions, and the subdivider is required by the subdivision regulations after your approval to sign up an SIA and to pony up the security, and that's really what would be happening here, only in the form of this kind of very short addendum to the IGA. I know you want to open the public hearing, take testimony and whatnot, and happy to answer questions about that when you get to motion time. So, there's two different ways to go. Either way, we'll protect the city and make certain that the important aspects of our SIA, most importantly, this guarantee that the improvements will in fact be built, be offered up by someone, and I'm sure we can figure out language with RTD for that, and I think an addendum to the IGA is the easiest way to do that. So, thanks for your indulgence, and I'm happy to elaborate further at the conclusion of the public hearing.
So, we will continue with questions of staff. We'll take public comment, do the motion, as well as the second, and then we can confer as to whether we want to add that addendum. Okay. Are there questions then of staff from the council at this time? Is there, I believe we had public comment then?
We do have the applicant in the audience. I'm not sure if he wants to add anything.
Right, the applicant is in.
It's a public hearing, so go ahead and open the public hearing.
Patrick Stanley?
Hi, thank you. I'm Patrick Stanley. I live at 4055 Ammon Street in Wheat Ridge, so.
Can I confirm the public hearing got opened? I'm sorry. Pardon me. You did? I apologize.
Right, I opened it before staff.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm jumping again.
We're good? Thank you? Okay. All right. So, I actually live just right down here in the neighborhood, but, you know, I just want to say we're very excited about this coming to Wheat Ridge, especially here as a citizen, we've been working hard through the EAS. I know that was all a public process as well. So, we're hoping that this is not a surprise to anybody, what we're trying to do here. We appreciate the support of the council and the staff here at Wheat Ridge, and Mr. Dahl, I really appreciate you taking a look at that. I know you and Marla had spoken about that. So, like I said, really, I think it pretty much speaks for itself here, but again, I just appreciate your consideration and the approval of the site. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be here for questions if anybody.
Thank you. Mr. Starker, you have questions?
I just had a question from Mr. Goff. So, if we went with the IGA instead of the SIA, would we be looking for surety and the common sense of the term that I would understand to provide the financial guarantee, or is there another type of entity that would provide that financial guarantee?
Yes, we'd be looking for the standard surety, and we have some flexibility in terms of what instruments the city will accept to support that. Our standard rule is 125% of the estimated cost of the improvements until they've been accepted by the city, and then 25% through the warranty period. And so, the money, the amount of money that has to be posted drops considerably, and we definitely work with RTD or their concessionaire in terms of what instruments they want to use, so long as they're drawn on the appropriate financial institution and are instruments that we could easily draw on. If there was a failure, then we've got some options there that we allow them to exercise.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the motion, which perhaps might be amended, so let's go with that. Thank you.
I move to recommend approval of case number MS-14-02, a request for approval of a four-lot subdivision plat for property located at 12,000 Ridge Road for the following reasons. One, all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. Two, the proposed plat will facilitate construction of the end-of-line Gold Line commuter rail station. Three, utility districts can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. A subdivision improvement agreement be executed with a cost breakdown for public improvements, installation, and surety at the time of recording.
That's it? All right. Do we have an amendment to the motion?
Second.
We have a second. All right. Do I have an amendment to the motion?
Yes, if I could suggest someone to add to the motion, the following. I further move to approve an addendum to the June 2011 intergovernmental agreement with Regional Transportation District to address matters customarily covered by the city's standard SIA in a form approved by the city attorney. Somebody could say "so moved," and we'll keep track of it.
So moved. Second.
Can I have a vote on the amendment?
Who was the second?
Mr. Starker. The vote on the amendment was...
Motion carries eight zero.
Now, we move on the main motion as amended, please. Vote on that.
Motion, the main motion as amended carries eight zero. Mr. Dahl, you will get me the wording for that.
We can move on to item, we can move on to item number four. Ms. Wooden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Resolution Number 49-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of, in the amount to $121,312.18 to fund the Tabor Street property acquisition services for reconstruction and award a contract to H.C. Peck &amp; Associates, Denver, Colorado. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge, a Gold Line partner, has been selected to receive federal funding for access and safety improvements to Tabor Street from the I-70 North Frendage Road to Ridge Road. The funding is provided through the Regional Transportation District and the Denver Regional Council of Governments Transportation Improvement Program, and will facilitate a project to widen and improve Tabor Street to provide bike and pedestrian access to the commuter rail station at Ward Road. The city is planning to improve Tabor Street via enhanced construction and restriping between I-70 Frendage Road and Ridge Road in preparation for the Gold Line. The design work is underway, but the city is seeking qualified assistance with property acquisition services. Because of the roadway widening and accommodation of bicycle and pedestrian facilities, both permanent and temporary acquisitions are needed. The firm selected will utilize the Federal Uniform Act to acquire the necessary properties as right-of-way along Tabor Street for the street improvement.
Thank you. Do we have any staff report on this?
Well, if you have any questions. Mr. Brink is here to answer questions.
Any questions on this one? Let's go on to the motion then.
Is a motion in order?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 49-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 Public Works capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation of $121,312.18 to fund the Tabor Street property acquisition services for reconstruction and to award a contract to H.C. Peck &amp; Associates, Denver, Colorado.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. DiTullio. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item five, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Number 48-2014, resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of property located north of 12525 West 32nd Avenue to planned commercial development. At issue, the Applewood Shopping Center is located in the western portion of the city of Wheat Ridge and generally bounded by West 32nd Avenue, West 38th Avenue, Youngfield, and Wright Street. The shopping center owner is desirous of redevelopment of the northeastern portion of the shopping center and is under contract to purchase a former parking lot located at 12525 West 32nd Avenue. Small strip of land located north of the new parcel needs to be incorporated into the redevelopment plan and is under separate ownership.
Do we have any staff discussion on this? Or questions of staff?
Just briefly, we brought this to city council a few months ago, just as a heads-up, that we were working with Regency Centers, who owns the Applewood Shopping Center, and as the staff memo states, they are looking to redevelopment a portion of that center. There was a piece of property that the ownership cannot be found, and it was in a tax lien for over 20 years, and so the Wheat Ridge Urban and New York Authority, Renewal Wheat Ridge, is helping out Regency to obtain that piece of property so that they can develop that southeast portion of the property.
Mr. Urban?
As I understand it, the Renewal Wheat Ridge will be purchasing the property from its current owner and then selling that to the developer. Is that correct?
It's, the developer has money in escrow to cover the cost of the property, and I believe the appraisal came back at about $750. So, correct?
Our costs, as far as, is there any, say, staff time or other costs associated with this process?
Staff time and the urban authority's attorney's fees, which were fairly minimal.
Appraisal fees we had to pay for, right?
I'm sorry.
Appraisal fee?
No, the appraisal fee also comes out of the escrow account set up by the developer, or the property owner, so the only thing is staff time and attorney time, attorney fees.
And that is included in the arrangement as well, that we reimburse for those, or?
No, the city, the urban authority covered that, those expenses.
Okay. I think a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 48-2014, a resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of property located north of 12525 West 32nd Avenue to planned commercial development.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. We're getting our sequence mixed up here. Now, we need discussion. Do we have any further discussion? None, let's vote, please. Pull the console.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. And item number six, let's see.
Me?
You, Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you. Motion to appoint a member to fill the District 4 vacancy for the Planning Commission. There currently is a vacancy on the Planning Commission in District 4. Donna Kimsey is a resident of District 4 and has submitted an application to the Planning Commission requesting appointment. Council members Langworthy and Wooden have requested that Donna Kimsey be appointed to fill the vacancy term ending 3/2/17. Just, is the motion in order?
Yes, please.
I'll make a comment. I move to appoint Donna Kimsey- I move to appoint Donna Kimsey to the Planning Commission representing District Four, term to expire March 2nd, 2017.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Wooden. Discussion or commentary?
I just meant to make a, a small comment. Donna Kimsey comes, has a lot of land use development and planning experience, so for us, me and Jen, we felt like she would be a really good fit for the role. She has experience and, and would under, and be able to come right into play. She's also attended the Planning Academy, so she has a, a better idea where Wheat Ridge is going, and so we look forward to having Donna Kimsey on the Planning Commission.
Donna happen to be here tonight? Nope. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. All right, I believe we have a, a motion and a second. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Good. Item seven, which is a presentation. Mr. Goff, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The city's been very fortunate over the last couple of years to be, to start experiencing some new redevelopment opportunities, which several are currently under, underway, and I'm very optimistic that we're gonna continue seeing these for, for some years in the future. So, you know, I know the mayor and council and then staff have been receiving many more questions from our citizens. We have a very active, engaged citizenry, and they wanna know what's going on and have a lot of questions. So, I thought it'd be prudent that we bring somebody in to kinda do a retail development 101 tutorial to give us all a little bit of education on, on retail development, and specifically on the west side of town here. So, I brought in Katie Press, was with KP Consulting Associates. She works extensively here on the west side of, of Denver, so she knows this area and the market very well. She has over 30 years of retail experience as both, as a retailer and a retail developer. So, like to invite Katie Press up, and she has a presentation here, and, and time for questions and answers.
Patrick, I'll move a slide.
Okay, just.
Good evening and welcome, Katie.
Thank you for having me. I'm just a little bit on my background, as Mr. Goff has, has given my brief background. I've been in the retailing industry for a little over 30 years. I cut my teeth doing 7-Elevens, believe it or not. That was actually a, a pretty good educational process as a retailer. I also did a stint for a decade with Safeway Stores. I transitioned out of that and became a developer, was vice president of development for Cattellus Commercial Group, which some of you may be familiar with now as Pro Lodges. For the last 12 years, I've been a consultant. I primarily consult on the private sector side, but I have a number of municipal clients as well, so I would say over the last five years, my background has been expanded by working with a number of municipalities here on the front range. I tend to try and do something a little more conversational, and it's really up to your pleasure, would you, if you would rather ask questions as we go along, or would you rather wait and save questions for the end? I am flexible either way.
The council's pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I'd ask that we ask questions at the end.
Ask questions at the end?
Okay.
Yeah, do, do get close enough to the microphone so we can all hear you.
I usually talk really loud, so I try to be careful.
Okay.
I usually don't even need a microphone, how's that? So, we're gonna start off first with how do retailers make decisions? It sometimes seems like that's a bit of an enigma, but it really isn't. It's really a pretty precise science for most retailers. I think the things that are really important to understand about this is that each retailer is unique, even with each genre of retail. A really good example is Einstein's does not make real estate decisions the same way that Starbucks does, and even though we might look at those as being sister-type of companies, they really have criteria that is unique to each, to each retailer. And I will tell you that from each retailer that you deal with, even within the same genre, that is absolutely true. So, it, it sometimes becomes more difficult to apply some standardized rules, although we're gonna go through some of those. You have to understand that at any given point in time, a retailer may act counter to what you think that they may act because of the uniqueness of how they evaluate real estate. National retailers evaluate opportunities from a global perspective. This is something that has changed dramatically since the downturn in the market. I would tell you, pre-2008, retailers tended to look at real estate decisions on a local or regional capacity. What has changed since then, and has, as retailers are evolving out of the recessionary period, is retailers really now look at opportunities on a super-regional or on a national level. So, for example, if a grocer, a grocery chain such as Kroger used to have a divisional aspect associated with Denver, and they used to dedicate so many capital dollars by this market, what has changed now is that they now look at opportunities nationally, which means that any opportunity that may fit into the Colorado marketplace is in competition with sites that are, are also going on anywhere else in the country, or wherever else that retailer is expanding their business. And that's a really important dynamic, because it puts now sites in our marketplace in competition with markets that may be more active, have more desirability than we do, and it causes retailers then to not necessarily be as aggressive for an opportunity particularly in our market. So, the pool has widened dramatically from each internal organization, and that's a really important dynamic when we talk about how retailers make decisions. Any new opportunity needs to meet basic criteria that retailer feels is necessary for their success. In today's environment, mistakes are not tolerated. We had an opportunity to be a little more free and easy with some of our real estate decisions, and retailers got a little more creative before we hit the downturn in the market. The real, one of the lasting impacts from the downturn in the market is retailers are not looking to incur risk in their real estate decisions. So, there is usually criteria that they feel comfortable that a site meets, that they will make the decision to go there, and if there are not enough of that criteria is met in today's environment, it equates to them as higher risk, and higher risk equates to an opportunity that is probably not going to be capitalized on. Development horizons are relatively short, and this is kind of a misnomer for a lot of people who are not necessarily in the retailing industry, but we don't have the capacity to look long-term. There's too many changing dynamics for retailers to be able to assess sites that are five and seven years down the road. They may have an idea of where they wanna get to in a five-year period, but they're not likely to be working on opportunities that are as much as five years down the road. And when we start talking about, which is kind of an anomaly for the cities, in the sense that we look, cities tend to look at things more on a long-term basis, when we start getting down to 10-year timeframes, we're talking, retailer's eyes just glaze over, and, and that's not an aspect that they're interested in even be, or even being capable to assess. Most development horizons for retailing are somewhere in a two-to-three-year range, and, and they're not going to really look at something that has a maturity level that's five years out. So, that's, that's an important aspect, and these are things that really are important for how retailers do make decisions. Retail falls into five distinct tiers. This is where it, we're kinda, we're not as mystical as it sometimes seems. Retailers, for the, for the most part, really fit into one of these categories. We do have retailers who transition between categories, and they tend to be the smaller, more flexible retailers, but in general, retail falls into these five distinct categories. The first is the one that we're all the most, most familiar with, and that's convenience retailing. These are the most common of retailers. These are store sizes, they range from 1,000 to 3,000 square feet. These are not large guys. They look at fairly tight trade areas, two-mile trade areas, which means that they can go every two miles, especially in higher-density corridors. They're independent in project size, so they're not necessarily tied to a size of project. They can go independent and sit freestanding, or they can sit with two or three other type of convenience retailers. Co-tenancy is not a factor. They are not looking for a larger-scale retailer to help drive customer bases to their doors. They tend to rely on pass-by or immediate traffic. They tend to be auto-centric, which means that they're looking for the automobile, that most of their customer base arrives at their businesses by automobile. And visibility and access are key. If you can't be convenient, if you can't see you, and we can't get to you. And that's, and, and both of those aspects are, it's not one or the other, it's both of those aspects. Guys that typically fit into this, Starbucks, gas stations, fast-food type of operators, these are typically convenience-related type of retailers. The next is neighborhood, and this is really what we're most commonly use in, in our everyday lives in terms of retailing. These are, this is really where we start talking about needs-based retailing. Needs-based are what we as, as customers need on a fairly regular basis to operate in our daily life. And with, these are, our store sizes can range from 40,000 to 123,000 square feet. As most of you know, Kroger, Kroger, which is King Supers, new store sizes are 123,000 square feet, and those are still thought to be neighborhood stores by, by Kroger. They look for two-mile trade areas, and, and that they share in terms of the convenience retailer. And again, that's a, it's an interesting statistic, especially when we start talking about grocery, because, you know, even though grocery stores have changed dramatically in the size of their stores over the years, their trade areas have stayed the same, and that's because we as consumers are really not willing to drive any farther than our ice cream melts in the back of our car in the middle of July. And so, when we get much beyond two-mile trade areas, there, we start to lose the accessibility factor that's usually associated with grocery-type of shopping, or needs-based type of shopping, and so they, they work pretty hard to keep with tighter trade areas. Project sizes are between 15 and 25 acres. They prefer convenience retail as co-tenancy, so that's why we start to see fast-food retailers and gasoline elements and, and other types of retailing that could also fit into the convenience category. This is, this is a defined style, okay? Grocery is a very defined level of, of development, and it is a destination-oriented shopping trip. We most times get in our car and are making a conscious decision to go to the grocery store. Even if it's a Tuesday night and we're, we're picking up things that we didn't get from over the weekend and we still need, this is still something that we tend to get in our car with and make a specific shopping trip for. They need to be highly accessible to the residential base. This is why we don't see grocery store centers really focused towards getting up on the interstate locations. They tend to like to tuck into more intersections that can deliver customers from a four-sided trade area. Trends that are affecting the grocery retailing, this is an interesting conversation, because out of all of the retailing genres coming out of the recession, and you'll hear, in retailing, you're gonna hear us talk a lot, because there were dramatic shifts in retailing that were caused by the recession, and, and of the most dynamic was probably grocery. We had the birth of destination stores like Sprouts, and ethnic-focused stores, and healthy eating, and, you know, if we really looked at the early 2000s, we were still pretty conventional grocery shoppers. We still really shopped at a, probably a traditional-oriented grocery store, and we didn't really have the complement of stores that are now starting to come into the marketplace. And what's interesting about that is that that has created an erosion of the conventional grocery dollar. We, we as consumers, we don't, because we have more choice, we don't eat more food. We still eat the same amount of food, you know, we may, we, there may be some ancillary things that we buy because, because opportunity allows us to, but in general, we still eat the same amount of food that we did before there were all these choices. We just have different places to spend our grocery dollars than we did before. This is starting to really force the evolution of the traditional grocery chains. This is why we're starting to see folks like King Supers move to 123,000 square-foot stores. They're trying to be reactive to some of the competitive factors that are coming into the marketplace. Some, some people may be aware, we have Cerberus, who is purchasing Safeway. Safeway is also, there, Cerberus is also the owner of Albertsons. Evolution of those two chains may be an interesting product of that, that new alliance and that new ownership. I think we're still gonna be a ways away from understanding what the true impacts of that acquisition are going to be. Sprouts, when you look at Sprouts at 25,000 square feet, pound-for-pound, they're competitive with every other grocery store, yet they have a very specialized product mix. It would be nearly impossible for you to go to Sprouts and do a, a traditional big shop from a grocery perspective, but yet their ability to produce, to sell high-quality produce and have high-quality meat products are certainly eroding away at the conventional grocery dollars. And so, that's an important factor, because this is, this is a genre that's in transition, and, and we're starting to see, I, I don't think we've seen the end of grocery competition starting to end this, enter this market, and still be impacting what our traditional grocers are doing. When we move away from, from our needs-based or our neighborhood-oriented retail, we get to mid-range retail. This is where you start to hear the terminology junior anchors, and they're junior because they're really not of a capacity to be considered a primary anchor. Their store sizes vary depending on the genre of the retailer. So, you know, a junior anchor can be as small as 15,000 square feet, but can be as large as 40,000 square feet. So, their characterization as a junior anchor is less about store size and really more about the type of retailer they are. When we start to get to this level of retailing, we start to have, you know, questions about how many folks are they trying to serve? And really, these are, these can range anywhere, some, some retailers in this category would, would be fine with a population base of 30,000, and then some retailers that fit within this category are gonna be looking for population bases of almost 100,000 people. This is another changing dynamic that came out of the recession. Going into the recession, we had some retailers who really thought that they could get, could be competitive with a lower population base. One of the ways to mitigate risk if you're a retailer is that you, you increase the number of people that you need in your trade area to support your store. And we saw that come out with retailers after the recession, where those retailers who might've said, maybe I can get by with 40,000 or 50,000 people, have come out post-recession and said, you know what, now our trade areas need to be 75,000, 80,000 people, and so we're going, we're going to only look for site opportunities, or we're going to condense into site locations that allow us to have this larger population base. These guys need high-profile locations with interstate, interstate visibility. Now, you're gonna see anomalies with this, you have some within your own community, and those were typically stores that were done pre-recession. Post-recession, I'm gonna tell you, most, most real estate that's being talked about are locations that are being talked about, or impacts to locations, existing locations in terms of relocations. We're finding these retailers are moving towards the interstate, because it has the ability to deliver that larger customer base to, to them. Co-tenancy with other mid-range retailers is mandatory. These are, these guys fit the category of birds of a feather flock together. We no longer really have the bookends that we used to have, you know, we don't have Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and Linens and things. We don't have Borders, and, and Barnes &amp; Noble, so, but they still wanna have co-tenancy with each other, because they typically find that their customer base is similar at times, and similar enough, that by grouping together, they allow themselves to capitalize on drawing the most amount of customers to their location. They like co-tenancy with general merchandise retailers. They like Target, they like Super Walmarts, they like Home Depots, they like, they like those types of retailers, because there are aspects of those retailers that may provide a more continual consumer base to them on a more regular basis, and so it helps them be better at capturing the trade area than, than if they were to stand alone. Trends that are affecting mid-range retail, this gets interesting, because, you know, this will also translate into super-regional retail, but e-commerce is definitely, this is where we as consumers are becoming every day more comfortable buying things online, and we can read a lot of articles about that, and e-commerce is definitely starting to impact this level of retailing. You know, there was, there's always been this thought that there are certain categories of this type of retailing, maybe women's clothes, or different elements where we're not as comfortable buying things online. Those are starting to fall away, and we're finding that more and more customers are getting comfortable about buying things online. Most of these retailers, though, are cognizant of that, and you, you see that they have both an online and a bricks-and-mortar presence, and so they're finding ways to cross merchandise with each other to become the beneficiary of, of e-commerce. So, rather than letting it continue to impact them as much, they're becoming responsive to it and incorporating it as part of their everyday... to it and incorporating it as part of their everyday business. Precision shopping, this is something that's, again, post-recession, and that's that we as shoppers have become much more laser-like in our shopping. Many of us are not as interested in spending a great deal of time shopping, we tend to go looking for something more specific, and we have an idea because of our ability to get online, to understand where it's at, and go in and purchase it and get out. And so, we don't find that there's as much, as an experience necessarily being, being spent on retailing. Now, there are certainly retailing concepts that incorporate mid-range retailers that are trying to enhance the idea of you spending more time with it, and they're working constantly on those kinds of elements, but still, we, we do see a dynamic shift in the way consumers shop today. Showrooming, and then that's another impact, that's where, especially that electronics is something that really kind of fits into this, and that's where we as consumers tend to go and play with it, 'cause we like to physically touch something. If you're buying a camera, you kinda like to feel it, to punch the buttons, and then we, we go and check and see if we can find it cheaper online and not have to pay sales tax, and tend to go and purchase sometimes online rather than purchasing it from the retailer. What you have is some retailers like Target who are finding, they're, they're taking merchandise and tailoring it specifically for Target only, so even if you wanna go in and play with it and touch it, you're still either gonna buy it on Target online or you're gonna buy it in the store. So, they're finding ways to mitigate that aspect and try and keep the sales within their stores. Super-regional retail, so this is the big guys. This is retail that is primarily non-discount soft goods clothing. This is when we start talking about mall-oriented type of retailing. The store size of the retailer does not dictate that it's a super-regional classification. You know, if you have a two-thousand-square-foot Coach store in the mall, that doesn't, because it's two-thousand square feet, does not mean it's not super-regional. The fact that Coach is a specific type of retailer, specifically towards super-regional type of retailing and mall, mall-type of opportunities, makes them a super-regional. One of the things that has changed dramatically is we used to have tighter trade areas for this, because there was a feeling that consumers were spending more dollars in this particular area. As things have changed, we now look at trade areas that are closer to twenty miles for, for this level of retail, which is why we're not seeing, we're starting to see evolution of some of these type of mall-type of developments away from the pure super-regional retail, and they're trying to supplement some of their businesses with mid-range retailers and, and other aspects in terms of entertainment. These guys are looking for population numbers around a million. I mean, they want significant population in order to, and if we think about, as we're moving through the tiers of retail, how often you shop at these in a, in a one-month period, it starts to make sense why, why population numbers are getting bigger as we move up the scale, because we're not daily shoppers at a mall. We may be weekly shoppers at a Marshalls or a TJ Maxx, and we're certainly going to be, you know, weekly, or twice weekly, or even sometimes more than that, at a grocery store. So, that's why we start to see trade areas grow and population demand grow in order as we, as we deal with these different tiers of retail. These guys need high-profile locations at interstate cross-sections. Now, we could all talk about Belmar and say that doesn't meet any of that, and I would tell you, I would put my thirty years' worth of experience that if Belmar was a discussion today, it might not be a super-regional type of mall. I think the retailers would not be nearly as supportive of it in today's environment, given its location and kind of away from some of the higher-profile locations. These guys are absolutely about co-tenancy, you're not gonna get one, they, they don't go rogue, how's that? These guys are, are gonna flock together and be together, they work synergistically, and, and you're not gonna see them move outside of this opportunity. The other guys who fit into this category are club membership stores, and that's Sam's Club and Costco. And the reason that they fit into this category is that they need very sizable population numbers, you know, well over the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand population numbers in order to support their stores, and so, they, they certainly fit into the super-regional retail category. Although, you're not going to see those type of retailers, you're not gonna see club membership stores sitting within malls, that doesn't happen. They, they are one of the few retailers who are quite happy to sit freestanding and all by themselves. Retail co-tenancy tends to flock to them, not the other way around, and so, they, they do their business quite, quite well without having to have the support of other retailers around them. Other trends affecting super-regional retail, interestingly enough, that there's been some movement back towards enclosed mall preferences, as consumers were starting to prefer that. Most people thought the, the mall was dead, the enclosed mall was dead, and actually, if you take a look at numbers coming out of the recession, we're starting to see increases in sales consistently from two thousand nine to today. So, even though the, you know, the rumors of their death were, were certainly out there, we're really starting to see good trends coming back in terms of preference for enclosed malls. And I think if any of you have spent any time up in Flatirons, you're starting to see transition of those retailers coming back, there's high-end retailers coming back to that mall, taking the space that was being used by perhaps some more smaller, less-focused retailers, and, and they're really starting to transition back. Lifestyle concepts, I mean, I, I think it's a concept that's here to stay. What's interesting about lifestyle concepts, though, is that there are certainly challenges associated with them. I think if you look at any lifestyle shopping center that's been built, and Belmar's certainly the closest example to, to your city, the orchards up north on I-25, there are aspects of them that work really well, but there are aspects about them that don't work so well. And it's why we see so many concepts of them, because each evolution of it tries to get to the point where we have less negative impacts associated with those centers. I wouldn't tell you that as a concept, they are totally as well-thought-out as we would like them to be, either as consumers, or potentially somebody having one in their community, but they are evolving and they're trying to figure out as a concept, you know, in a market like Colorado where we have snow, and wind, and rain, and lightning, and all those things, how do we make these lifestyle concepts really work long-term? We're starting to see a tremendous amount of outlet center growth, that has been the darling that came out of the recession. We have become much more price-conscious as consumers, and that's translating into these type of retailers. What's really changing about outlet is that, there used to be the time, you remember, they sat like twenty-five miles out of the metropolitan area, that's no longer true. Now, what they're finding is, is because, as retailers, these are not necessarily irregulars or second-tier merchandise, most of the retailers who retail an outlet manufacture a specific set of goods for outlet, and they find that they're having the same customer. At times, you may be, you know, a first-class Ann Taylor shopper, and sometimes you might be an outlet Ann Taylor shopper, but more than likely, you are an Ann Taylor shopper regardless. And it may be the circumstances under which you're purchasing something that will dictate where you go, makes that more likely that the closer that you are together, the better the solution than actually these great distances afar, apart from the metropolitan area. You know, and if you, if you've paid any attention to The Mills, which sits in Lakewood, you'll know that Simon owns The Mills, and they're starting to make evolutionary changes to that, and trying to bring up its tenant mix, and trying to change some of the aspects about it that have not been working. I do think the Denver area is poised to get a second outlet, or its first real, true main outlet center, and I think that you'll probably see that come in sometime in the next couple of years. Again, showrooming is also affecting these retailers as well, you know, and again, you have retailers adapting to that, like Macy's. You know, I, as a consumer, at Macy's can buy ten dresses online, and if I don't like any of them, I can take them back to the store. So, they're working to keep both the online shopper and the in-store shopper to be their The last tier I'm gonna address is Main Street retail, and this takes all kinds of different forms, and it's probably one of the most discussed and debated concepts that's out there today. Again, there's as many successes as failures, there's a lot of failed initiatives in creating Main Street, both in areas where you have existing infrastructure that would lend itself towards a Main Street, you know, a typical downtown that may not be thriving as much as you would like it to be, as well as trying to initiate Main Street retail from a ground-up perspective. From my, in my opinion, initiating it from a ground-up perspective is probably the most difficult thing to do. There are so many different aspects that make these places interesting once they get going, that it's hard to anticipate all of these in a ground-up development, and inherently, what we find is that there are aspects usually missing, and some are fatal in a lot of perspectives. You know, these are, this, this is an entity, a retailing entity that is reliances on independent retailers. And, and it really is a game-changer. So, you know, when we talk about the other tiers of retailers, these are identifiable retailers. You know how to call them, you know how to pick up the phone and have a conversation with them, you know how to understand what their site criteria is, whether you have the right opportunity for them. Main Street retail is really retailers who may still be conceptualizing a, a business idea and are not in business today, or maybe an expansion of a small-scale retailer who is looking to either relocate or expand their current business. There's no directory of those. You can't just go down the list and go, "Oh, we should want those guys, how do we get them in?" So, these are retailers who really have to have a, you have to have a development for them to respond to. If you can't identify them, then you have to build the infrastructure, and you have to hope that they're gonna be responsive to what you're doing. And, and that brings a lot of risk to both the development concept, when you, especially when we're talking ground-up, and this presents a lot of risk to conventional retailers. So, the concept itself is not necessarily attractive to conventional retailers, because nine times out of ten, this is not a, a concept that they're comfortable operating in. They, most, most national chain retailers know that I need X amount of parking spaces, it's gotta be so many feet from my front door, I need to have visibility to the Main Street, I need to have signage, I need accessibility, and many times, Main Street or creative retailing opportunities has some sort of aspect affiliated with them that is just off from that. So much so, in many cases, that it presents too much risk for them. So, more times than not, you're going to see these, these opportunities be responded to by these independent retailers, and that really brings a whole host of, of different factors in terms of recruiting retail to these types of opportunities. It's been interesting, 'cause this concept's been talked about a lot in the retailing industry, we talk about it a lot. And why do some Main Street concepts thrive and others struggle? There's been some studies done on this, and there was one done by Florida State who evaluated, I believe, five town centers in the state of Florida where they were looking at this. And what they really came away from was there's some significant factors that need to be considered if we're gonna do this type of retail development. One, there needs to be significant residential density in close proximity to the project. These don't work very well in the suburban environment, because we just don't have the residential density to provide that level of support. Interestingly enough, of the five they evaluated, two had a grocery anchor, and those two were thriving and the other three were not. So, everyday needs is really an important component, and the reason, you know, in general, we probably visit the grocery store anywhere between two-point-three and two-point-five times a week. That kind of trip traffic or customer traffic helps support the other businesses, and so, if we have that kind of, of everyday needs anchor in one of these type of opportunities, we're driving consumers there on a more regular basis, which helps the other retailers. If there's a lot of competition from strip retail, this is a challenge. If you have conventional places to move to as a retailer, then you will find that they will more than likely choose those opportunities on a more regular basis than the more creatively-oriented retail. Automobile-dominated orientation for the area, if you have heavy automobile orientation, that does not necessarily lend itself well to Main Street type of retailing. It's hard to get the scale right when you have six lanes of traffic going both ways. The pedestrian and, and elements that are necessary to create a sense of environment in these, in these types of retailing projects are almost impossible to achieve. And I spent, a good deal of last year, I did a, an analysis for the, a portion of Colfax, three miles on Colfax, from Colorado Boulevard all the way to Yosemite. And we really, and this ties into the scale of retail as well. I mean, first of all, you can't support three miles of retail, it's, it's just not possible. And, and then the scale of Colfax was really a limiting factor in creating the environment that this type of retail really relies on. And so, we had to get very creative in looking at, how did we create retail nodes along that corridor, and really concentrate our retailing efforts based on some of the building blocks that the, that Colfax has, i.e. Chimeria where we have a number of grocery store anchors, and then Elm where we have things like Marzic's, and we have The Elm, and we have some other elements coming in. And then that leaves the really hard question about, what do you do with the spaces in between? But that's really the crux of it, I mean, in terms of this type of retailing, long vehicular-oriented corridors do not lend itself to this type of retail. So, that pretty much concludes the tutorial. I know I moved a little bit fast, it tends to be me. So, I'm happy to answer any questions and, and see, see what you guys would like to know a little bit, I'm happy to expand on any of this.
Genevieve. I have some questions. Regarding when you talked about the mid-range junior anchors, you said they were looking for thirty thousand to a hundred thousand population, and those were the trade areas. Now, how are they defining the trade areas? Previously, you talked about a two-mile radius, and then it switched to thirty thousand to a hundred thousand, so, could you just tell us how those mid-range, how they define that?
They're less of a, they're less of a circle radius. So, they tend to look, basically what they look at is, where's their next store? So, they're, they're really analyzing a market from a broader perspective, and they'll tend to look and say, so for example, the Ross that's here on Wadsworth, they're gonna look and say, where's our next closest Ross? Before they would place another store in the trade area, they would look to see how their existing stores are doing from a volume perspective, and then whether or not they feel that there's enough capacity in the market to add another store. So, it becomes less about, it used to be, it used to be a five-mile ring, seven-mile ring, that's not true anymore. What they really now are looking at is more capacity by store, and whether or not they're doing the sales volume out of the store that they need to do, and whether there's capacity by population to add another store. And so, some of the hard and fast rules for those mid-range retailers has kind of gone by the wayside, and they, they're relying less on kind of, you know, the ring approach in terms of drawing circles around populations and going, "Oh, this leaves a gap, we need a store here." They're really analyzing it from some different perspectives.
So, then also those junior anchors, would they be looking at other things in relation to a certain location that we might have? And, you know, if there is a Ross over here, then they'd look at our population versus what's around us already?
Well, your Ross, your Ross is an anomaly.
Okay.
I don't think if, if, if we were sitting down and talking to Ross today, I'd be surprised that they would do that site today. They would rather be with more co-tenancy, more retailers that fit into that category, be it office supply, sporting goods, other soft-good retailers, it's not uncommon to see TJ Maxx, Marshalls, and by the way, they're the same company, it's not uncommon to see TJ Maxx, Marshals sitting with Ross in the same shopping center. So, Target, they're looking for more co-tenancy today and, and looking for opportunities where they can group. And if we really jump all the way up the corridor, they don't, they're not represented again until almost all the way up at Eightieth and Wadsworth. So, you know, the fact that they sit there all alone, so to speak, is kind of an anomaly for them. And I think if you were looking to bring in more mid-range retailers, one, you would need a site that has some pretty high focus in terms of accessibility and visibility. Again, these are retailers who are typically making decisions to get up on the interstates. And so, they, they would probably be looking for sites that are maybe more along the High Seventy corridor, and the ability to accommodate more than, than one would certainly be key. You would be looking at the ability to accommodate four and five of them in terms of, of creating an actual opportunity. I'm sorry, did that answer?
Yes, it did. Now, there's a site in Fort Collins, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, it's off of I-25 and Harmony, and what's interesting about this is it, there's a library, and then it appears to be surrounded by what you called a super-regional area. So, it has all the, there's a two-story library, and then a little street with all the super-regional stores, the smaller stores that you talked about. How did that city store connection, how did those connections happen? Where there's a city space, and then the stores cooperate with that?
So, that's Bearish Project on Harmony, that's the one with Target in there, there's a two-story office in there as well. You know, that happened before the downturn in the market, but that was attempted at a hybrid lifestyle center. So, they, we were trying to bring in some conventional retailers to help support the concept, and then tried to do some, some creative retailing concepts where the smaller-scale retail and office. then try to do some creative retailing concepts where the smaller-scale retail and office. And part of the lifestyle concept is to try and bring in uses other than retail, so to provide what we call complexity of use. That would be civic uses, residential uses, and non-retail, commercial uses. And the idea is you're trying to create an environment where multiple facets of either living, shopping, and working can all coexist together. Those are difficult projects to achieve. And Fort Collins has a rather restrained retailing market, so it makes it more likely to do something a little more creative in that respect, because it's hard as a retailer to get into that market, so you may be willing to do something a little more creatively. But I'm trying to think, in the metropolitan area, we don't really see that integration of use quite as completely as we do in that project in Fort Collins. I think the project on Highway 34 in Loveland has attempted, with McWinnies, to try and do some of those elements, but they've not actually been able to execute that as well either. So again, this is, these are concepts that are being tried and experimented with without necessarily somebody saying we've hit 100% home run, and so then the next evolution of that design produces perhaps some different aspects.
I'm sorry, along the same line, when we're talking about more of public spaces, I'm thinking of up at the Flatirons, where they have those big open spaces, where they have water features and big boulders, and so that people can gather, and there's the ice rink, and there's other things. Creating those public spaces around the stores, in addition to like a library or something, so you're saying in general, there's not a lot of success around that right now?
No, I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the concept of creating all these different uses within the city project.
Okay, the different uses, okay.
In terms of programming a space, that's what we call it, enacting a space, creating environments where we do want to spend more time. So, you know, the retailers don't love that we become precision shoppers. So, they would love for us to come and spend more time in the overall project, and in order to do that, they're starting to create more of a theatrical or elements associated with things that we might be more attracted to spending time with. And they're starting, it's interesting, I mean, one of the real interesting offshoots of that is signage. We're starting to see in our industry, the ability of signage to help dictate character of a shopping area, and really kind of being used in an iconic manner to help identify and brand a particular shopping area or even a particular shopping center. And so, you know, before, we used to talk about signage, and it was pretty rudimentary. I mean, you had a pylon sign, and you had some low-profile sign, and signage has changed dramatically in terms of creating an environment in a shopping center. So, there is evolution of that discussion, and I do think that it's becoming to the point where it's creating a divide between older shopping centers and newer shopping centers that are coming online. Newer shopping centers are having, you know, more colorful public art, potentially, this iconic signage elements, differing architecture, wayfinding, and it's making our older shopping centers look more dated, to the point where our older shopping centers are going to have to start making some evolutionary changes in that aspect in order to appear as current and modern as some of the new shopping centers coming online are. So, bottom line, it's a really important aspect, and it's something that the retailing is starting to embrace and move forward with. And I think you're going to start seeing it in almost all aspects of retailing that kind of moves from the grocery level up. I mean, convenience retailers aren't going to ever, you know, they're not going to ever sit down and worry about your experience as much, you know, but once we start getting into the grocery and levels up, I think you're going to start to see more and more of that come along.
Okay, and this is my last question. Regarding Main Street retail, you said that independent retailers have, that you have to have a development for them to respond to, for the independent retailers to want to be interested in the Main Street. How does someone recruit those independent retailers to come to your Main Street?
So, you can't. I've responded, I don't know how many RFPs, I did one in Longmont, I love it, because they're like, "Well, we want a recruiter for our Main Street retail." And I spent quite a bit of time with their council, helping them understand that there is no such thing. There's no directory of retailers for small, independent, or regional retailers. Rather, what happens is, is you have to build it and hope they're going to come. You have to create enough activity and vitality and life about an area where somebody who maybe has a smaller business in another marketplace and would like to move it, or is, again, somebody conceptualizing a business and says, "You know, I think we could do really well here." And that's why existing Main Street infrastructures are transitioning much quicker, because they already have those elements in place to start building off of. When you start talking about building from scratch, you have to have somebody who's going to try and come in and build it and hope that it's going to happen. And in today's more restricted development horizon, that's a really tough thing to get done.
So we have to create the environment for someone to want to come. And then my last-
Right, Genevieve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let somebody else have a shot here. Mr. Giattulio?
So, I wanted to let council know, you know, at one time, Wheat Ridge, the city of Wheat Ridge had a lot of iconic signs, and then rules were passed that said you can't have pole signs that were icon signs. And so, we've tried, as past councils and past elected officials, to bring back the icon signs, but we have these rules in place that says, if you have a pole in front of your building, we don't let you reuse that pole, grandfathered in, you can't build on them again. And I think we should look as a council to come back to where pole signs and icon signs are not a bad thing if they're done right. You know, if they have the ice cream cone on top of it, or the cup of coffee, or whatever they are, or the cat we used to have on 44th Avenue, we should look at the icon signs again, not say the pole signs are necessarily a bad thing, depending on the application. So that was one thing I wanted to mention. And the other thing, so what's old is new again, which is the icon signs, because we had those a long time ago when the city was first starting. And then the second question is, I understand that what some of these businesses are looking at a population where a city is sitting out, like Fort Collins, away from major metropolitan areas, but the population of Wheat Ridge is 30,000, but we're right next to Arvada, Lakewood, and Denver. So what do they look at for a population of the city of Wheat Ridge? Do they say, for example, Wadsworth has 40,000 cars a day, plus you have a 30,000-person base, what do they consider our population? Especially those mid-range, like the TJ Maxx?
They don't look at your population. If a retailer's making a locational decision, they look at the, they don't care about jurisdictional lines. It has no impact to them. What they'll do, based on where other existing stores and other competitors are at, they'll define what they think the trade area is for that specific opportunity, and then they'll run a demographic analysis to see who's actually in it. And that doesn't differentiate between jurisdictional lines. And that, you know, that's something I didn't put in the slide, but the reality is, is that unless you're Boulder, and everybody understands you're in for a pretty big ride if you want to try and do a project in Boulder, most retailers do not do, don't really pay a lot of attention to jurisdictional lines. They don't really go, "Oh, I want to be here versus here." They really are looking at location first, and then opportunity, and it really doesn't fall along the lines of jurisdiction. And I want to go back and say one more thing about signage. Yes, old-fashioned, you know, iconic signs are definitely what's old is new again, but there's also an added element to signage in terms of taking the traditional old shopping center sign and creating much different architecture and aspects to it that really can take it, can help create a theme in terms of branding for a shopping center.
So do they look at a population, like you said, a lot of these wanted to be near a highway or near I-70, like a TJ Maxx, but what do they, do they look at a Wadsworth or a Kipling, where they have a huge amount of traffic going to those locations? Like, for example, 40,000 cars a day on Wadsworth or Kipling, does that take into their account?
They'll look at it as a secondary. I mean, the primary objective is to be on the interstate, which has the ability to deliver a customer base from a much broader, from a bigger trade area. As you can imagine, if you're trying to get to a population of 80,000 people, you're looking at a pretty big trade area. And so you need the ability to efficiently deliver that customer base to your site, and nothing does it better than the interstate. What they are going to look at then is, from a secondary perspective though, is that a street that has, as we say in the industry, legs? Meaning, it can't go a quarter of a mile and dive off and go somewhere else, it's got to still have the ability to connect the customer base to that location. Now, as retailing gets more strong, and retailers get a little less conservative, you know, the opportunity to come back and do non-interstate locations is probably going to be there. But I would tell you, that's not in this development horizon, it's probably the next development horizon for retail, and not something that I think you can get a lot of retailers to really engage with today.
Thanks. Ms. Davis?
Can I just ask a quick question on that retail horizon? So is that two or three years? Because I know you were saying it's not five or 10, it's two or three years retail horizon.
Yep. And the reason for that is, is, I mean, we have retailers changing concepts. You know, they're changing size, they're changing, they're changing conceptually to be more responsive to us. You know, growth patterns are changing in some areas, some areas are getting better, some not as good. There's just too many factors that play into their real estate decision, that when you move the decision out too far, present too many unknowns for them to capitalize on.
You referred to Main Street areas that are inviting, and I might be putting in my own words to this, but my guess is that you're trying to say that beyond the stores, there's got to be reasons to go there, to visit that Main Street, be it the charm, or the art, or the waterways, or the walkability, et cetera. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's not only those, I mean, the aesthetics of the area are definitely a key component. You know, it has to be someplace you want to go and spend some time. But it also has to be other reasons that get you in the area. One of the real challenges with Main Street-type of retailing opportunities is they can be tucked into areas where you're out of sight, out of mind. You know, if we look at Arvada, you have to make a conscious effort to move up that way, which means you're probably, or more than likely, trying to frequent one of those businesses in there. The more reason you have opportunity to go that area makes you more aware of the total breadth of retailing that's available in the area, and makes you a more likely customer of those retailers. If we look at opportunities, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the little retail Main Street that was built by Bradburn up on 120th, it was done by Continuum. And it was done as part of their overall residential master plan development. It, 120th comes roaring past it, there's no stoplight, there's a Ted's Montana Grill on one side, and it moves down a couple blocks going this way. That retail has never gotten off the ground, and the reason being is that the only people who turn down that street are the people who live in that subdivision. And so, it becomes out of sight, out of mind. People can see Ted's Montana Grill, can't see anything else, and there's just not enough traffic coming by it, or be a reason to be driven to it on a daily basis to help those retailers survive. So, conceptually, when we're building from scratch and trying to make things happen, there's a lot of aspects that need to go into Main Street retailing that either dictate that you have the right opportunity to build off, have the right building blocks, and then can be able to try and capitalize on by doing some key things to make it happen.
One other question. When we have mixed-use zoning, we were talking about combining, of course, retail. What is the success ratio of housing being above retail stores?
Well, the challenge with it is, is nobody in my arena knows how to build residential. So, you know, we know how to build retail on the ground floor, but we don't know jack about what we're doing about putting residential above it. And typically, the residential guys don't know a whole lot about the retailing, and tend to make some pretty critical mistakes. I mean, we see a lot of examples of, you know, ill-conceived retailing, because we have somebody who's not necessarily an expert in that level of development, maybe it's not even the right location for it. You know, and so, you know, there's those inherent challenges, aside from the fact of just having, you know, the issues of smells, and sound, and different aspects about it. I mean, it's certainly a concept that can work, and it can work in differing markets, but it's not, it's not a simple development arena for either one of the two genres to execute both well. How's that?
Council have other questions? Nope? Thank you. Thank you very much, it was very interesting. Did we get a copy of the presentation?
Yes, I can forward that to you.
Okay.
Can you put it on the internet?
Yeah, we can put it on the city's website. Katie?
Okay. I just like to have a moment of time in the meeting that's going to close. And we'll have some folks wait.
Just real quickly, Mayor, thank you. Just a reminder to our public that our Recreation Center is closed this week for our annual maintenance and cleaning, but if you do have a annual membership or manual pass, you can use that at the Golden Recreation Center for free. The Rec Center will be back open this coming Saturday.
Okay. Our city attorney?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing today? Elected officials, Mr. Giattulio.
Nothing this evening?
Mr. Starker?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I just want to say a quick thank you. We had our eighth annual block party on Saturday. We probably had over 100 people there. And again, it's a big success. If anybody in their neighborhoods need help organizing a block party, I'm happy to help, so give me a holler or an email. But I want to thank the neighborhood, because once again, we threw a good block party.
Another drunken brawl.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Ms. Woodin?
Nothing.
Ms. Langworthy?
Next Monday, Labor Day. So everybody stay safe, try to refrain from drinking too much, as the police officers will be out there to help you stop, if that's what you've chosen. So just be safe on the roads, kids are in school, and keep them in mind, because the weather is still warm, so they like to be out and play as long as they can. That's him.
Nothing tonight.
And Mr. Palmer?
Well, thank you. We had a block party last night, and if I knew you were offering up help, I would have-
Consultive.
Yeah, I would, oh, consultive help, okay. But it was all, but I agree, it was a great time to get neighbors together, enjoy, you know, the summer as it ends and kids go back to school, so it was a great time. I want to thank everyone who's come down and made comments, and certainly sure, I've gotten a lot of emails over the past several days, as I'm sure many people are aware, and I'm responding to people, and if I haven't gotten to you, hang tight, and we'll keep this dialogue going and keep the work going, but thank you.
Thank you. I see the treasurer's out here. Did you have any comments? No? Then I officially adjourn the meeting. Thank you.